All right, we're ready to call the order at six oh one. Cindy, would you like to call roll, please?
Bryan.
Present.
Smith.
Present.
Delindo. I will need a motion for a quorum. I make motion for a quorum.
Second.
Wrecking. I need your vote.
Yes.
Smith, yes.
All right, line item three, department reports. Do we have a report from the maintenance department?
Uh, yeah. It is. Representative for the O-MAG was in the other day. So he goes, might want to take a look at the natural gas system assessment. I can't approve it just basically. What they found to be approved and stuff like that. It's much like that, so.
Play this. Okay.
Play this paperclip just part of the report.
Is that the O-MAG? That's O-MAG?
Yeah. His car, the guy who was here, his car slipped in that jacket. The finder. Don't have to tell you more about his visit because it's like came in at the very tail end of it. He said, look it over. He told me to look it over and then hand it to the board members, have them look at it too. That's, it's kind of a long read.
We may have an email reported on.
There are just a couple of things. Thank Kevin Ware for helping us put up the Christmas decorations with the use of the county equipment. But when we were replacing them, I noticed that all the receptacles, except for the very few that have covers on them, are deteriorating and falling apart. You know, there's getting sun, plastic in the sun just corroded. And it's, they all need to be replaced except for, I think there's three of them that have covers on them. They had been replaced. Well, probably not long before I came up here. So I guess what, maybe after we take them down, maybe has. Did the A C put them up originally or?
I think they probably helped. I'm not real sure. I'm sure they probably did and probably told them and asked what. Could be the best, safest with electricity.
Well, they're all right as long as the lights are off, you know, during the day. There's no power to them. I mean, I can't swear to that. It might have new power to it, but I'll, I'll be the one finding it out if the.
You might call it.
But anyway, they're at the point now where just unplugging the ones we have now, we're probably going to break off the plastic.
Outside.
Parts of it, so they need to be replaced before next year.
So they don't have any covers or doors or anything on them?
The.
What do they have for a faceplate?
They don't, most of them don't even have faceplates on them. I mean, you have the, you know, the covers that you find in the house here.
So it's just bare receptacles. Is what you're saying? Yeah, those definitely need to be fixed.
Yeah. Squeeze through this year. They need to be replaced by next year for sure.
We've been using this one for years.
Yeah.
It's not a good summertime with, with warmer.
Yeah. And I noticed that a lot of children, this is also subject to the receptacles now, are crossing the road here. I don't know where all the kids are coming from, but I noticed that when school lets out, even though the blinkers are going off and stuff, some of the people aren't really slowing down. Not, it's not so much slowing down, but they like, they're still rolling. A lot of the children are still, you know, crossing the street and stuff, which is dangerous on itself. And I was wondering if we can do it or the state has to do it since their highway is put crosswalks. Here and not at Saddlehorn, but here in Lassolane. Because that's where most kids come from. They don't go all the way down to Saddlehorn. I think most kids do live on Saddlehorn.
Crossing it, your, or they crossing it, your street?
Yeah.
Or the one up from there?
Both. And I think for the safety sake, I think, Idaho is not going to protect them, but. And they do, and I've noticed also that they cross in the middle of the street, you know? If they don't cross at the corner, then they just cross wherever. So I just thought maybe get some painted crosswalks and maybe direct them towards the crosswalks and, you know, because as it is now, if they're crossing in the middle of the road and somebody hits them, you know, they can use the argument, well, there was no crosswalks. They were walking across the middle of the street or the middle of the block or whatever, you know?
Maybe we could call the sheriff's office and ask them if they can have a visit to the school on just crosswalk safety or. That's a good idea.
Do we have a painted designated crosswalk?
There were two, I believe, weren't there painted at one point? Well, it's been several years. I think.
Well, they, they redid Highway fifty and I don't think they painted anything. They just gave us the school zone signs. But I don't think they're.
I thought they repainted him when, the first year my question was here and we started working on that, on the blinking signs. I thought they were painted that year, but that was, that's been three, four years ago now. His first year here has been six, six years ago. So I mean, that's probably definitely worn by now.
Yeah.
Before that, maybe asking.
Is that something we do or something the school does?
That's what my question was.
The D O T did the painting, but school might, I say, you might go down that and speak with superintendent, let him know what you're seeing and ask him if, you know, inviting this sheriff department over just to give them a, a safety. Let's talk, you know, on crossing where things are marked and then also getting with the D O T and see if they can repaint it.
Well, the children are not see crossing or, you know.
Probably very.
Like fourth grade, third, fourth grade, so, you know, they, there would be an idea for them to come and talk to them, but, you know, kids that young, they just look at you on a blank spare.
They're so often, they wouldn't come out and monitor when school's out, you know, having sheriff in town every so often, but. Just know the presence is, you know, and when school's out, a presence could be around and people might, like I say, slow down, pay attention a little bit longer than to roll by.
We need him, we need one at least though for the, for people to get across there. And the people that can't walk very fast or take off running or whatever, can't see, they need a place to be able to cross the highway.
Why don't the radar speed sign?
They do, but only during.
School hours from seven thirty until four thirty.
Seven thirty to four thirty. I guess I couldn't be in here after hours.
Well, we tried to, we did that when we first downed the state, but I mean, they said, no problem. But we found out this, it ran the batteries down.
Oh.
If it was running speed all the time, by the time the first time it come on for school hours, they'd be dead.
I think it should.
Okay. Now I know that I'm sorry, Joey, looking down.
See how fast you can get.
See how I'm slow or not.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I do that a lot, especially my old pickup.
I would, uh, the office needs to call over to the district engineers, Donny Head.
Yes.
And tell them, ask them about what we need to do to have the state put crosswalks in or crossings in. Cause they're the ones that pushed the safe routes to school program and all that stuff. So I'm sure they've dealt with that quite a bit. They can get them all rolling or at least tell you how to. What else you got, Stuart?
Oh, I had no water tower report. Oh, we, we finally got the pressure issue resolved.
Is that why there was so much usage this last month? I was going to ask.
This, this is strange. The, the tank was full and, I mean, it was completely full. In fact, it was running over. And when the, the board took the regulator that he had to replace off of it, he took the regulator home. The next morning, now keep in mind that these are fifty-five thousand gallon tank. The water was half gone. So overnight, where there shouldn't be any usage, twenty-five, at least twenty-five thousand gallons of water went somewhere. And.
So we have a lot of usage on, I don't remember which tower it was, but.
Well, this reading will be high too because it overflowed twice. But the way we control it in that one meter box, there wasn't a whole lot you could do about it until they actually replaced that part. But it's been resolved, so you know, it's going to be higher usage off of this particular meter. I guess, uh, the only thing you can go by is what the previous month's reading is off of both meters and, and see which one's actually using more. And that would definitely be this one here. So that's a lot of water going somewhere. But, you know, if it was a main break, you'd have, you know, ground crater out or it surfaced somewhere. The last one meter or the main was, we repaired leaking was over by Randy Reed's house. And it was because the ground was just saturated is the only reason we do that. So, but these mains are so deep and we're this close to the, the river. It might take a long time for them to surface, you know, a main, main break somewhere or a leak. It don't even have to be a break, it'd be a pretty good steady leak. I do, ever since we've lowered the, uh, the floats in the, in the lift station, I've always wondered why we have such a continuous flow of water coming through the sewer system. And it doesn't matter when you check it in there, it's always, it seems like the same amount of water is always flowing in there. You didn't know it last time because of, you know, the floats are up and you really didn't know until it kicked down. And now we've got that pipe exposed all the time, there's just a steady stream of water. And for a little town like this, it, it shouldn't be like that really. I mean, it should have maybe spurts of continuous water, but it's got to back down and then they come back up again. It just seems like it's just constant. And I don't know, we got a busted main that's leaking into the sewer system. I've looked around different manholes and stuff and I don't see any amount of water flowing at any one place, so I don't know. I mean, I know we've got a leaking system, but twenty-five thousand gallons in one night is quite a bit of water. But we'll keep looking. I mean, might be something that overlooked or, no, we have, you know.
Does anybody know off the top of their head what our average? Useage is that we buy?
I know one of the towers, it's always just over, it's usually between two hundred and three hundred thousand gallons. And then the other one is usually a little bit higher, but this was like almost eight hundred thousand gallons of water this last month.
Off this near?
Off one, I don't remember which, it's the north or the south one.
I think it's probably the south.
But it was like, and but it, but like the month before, it was when, is in the normal range. But like I said, this last month was when I was like, whoa.
Yeah, so we've got problems somewhere. And this tower only feeds the southeast portion of town. Everything south of Frontier Drive and everything east of the highway is fed off the water tower. So the problem is somewhere around here, but it's, it's a big area. I mean, not like over, you know, that part of town where everything's kind of packed together and then spread out here, so.
So is that regulator adjusted now to where it's holding the right level in the tank?
So far, so good. But the board's gonna, he's gonna come out and adjust it a little more tomorrow. Because we're, we had it set if the indicators start climbing and. So therefore we're using a lot of water. I mean, it's just ridiculous. So that's that problem. Like I said, I've looked in all the manholes and there's just, there's no volume of water more than usual going anywhere. So I don't know. Now, I think the further, the closer we get to the river and the sandier it gets, the more difficult it's going to find to find a major leak. I mean, that's the problem.
Have we, do we get audited by anybody that comes in and takes the amount of water that we're buying versus?
On the water side, I do on the gas side, but on the water.
Do we have any good way to pull that information to compare those numbers?
No, I mean.
Well, in order for D E Q to come in and do a free water loss audit, um, there's, well, we're on that. On the first page right there tells you everything you've got to have ready to lay down in front of them when they show up, so.
I'm like, this was the first month I noticed anything, so was going to let Stuart know so that like, like look around this next month. We can see if it's still.
And how much did you think it was off by?
Several hundred thousand gallons. I said, cause usually both of them run anywhere, one of them I know runs between two and three hundred thousand gallons each month. And the other one is usually a little bit more, because like you said, it serves a bigger portion of the town. So it's usually a little bit more, like maybe four to five hundred thousand gallons, but this was eight hundred thousand gallons.
So there's really no way to isolate it?
Yeah, I mean.
Put radioactive dye in the water?
They, they claim that they can find the leaks or that's what they said at that.
They probably give you a report and say, well, here you have a huge area. Have a leak. You got a leak.
Alva has joined the new electronic water meters, because they had a bunch of leaks and I had no idea. And that solved, they found them.
Really?
So getting there.
Yeah, that's the bad part, because we're so close to the water table and we're so sandy. It's a whole lot different.
Well, we have one customer that I actually know of that has used, uses a lot of water every month, but they just, for whatever reason, they don't want to fix it.
Yeah, the toilet never gets fixed.
Although I think what theirs is is another ground leak. And they just, because they, they do use a lot of water for no more than what's there. I mean, all it is is a bathroom, I mean, basically. I think, I don't know, that for whatever reason they choose not to find it. Cause you can watch that new digital leak or just. And that's the bad thing about, the bad thing for the customer with these new meters is that, you know, it pretty much, it, every drop basically gets registered on there, so you can't get away with anything, but.
Do we have everything that we need to call the D E Q in to do a water loss of it?
I don't know. I don't know what kind of work to keep in before I got here, but like I said, everything that needs, you gotta have is on that face sheet right there.
Well, let's get all of that and have them do it, because you can justify the cost of a lot of searching for water leaks if you're losing hundreds of thousands of gallons of water.
Well, this particular, if it is a leak, particular leak started within the last month. I mean, it just, I think that's what messed up the regulator is because it was trying to keep up and it, it couldn't. We were losing more water than it was pumping into the, into the tank. So.
So is there a pretty high flow rate on that meter? Even now?
Yeah, it's got a digital meter on it, so it, I mean, it's, it's, it was pumping in eighteen gallons a minute. And I don't, since the board put that new regulator on it, I can't remember what he told me it was. But even if pumping eighteen and a half, if it is still pumping eighteen and a half gallons into the tank, you know, we shouldn't be, this time of year, be losing that much water, you know, according to the indicator on the, on the storage tank, so.
Okay.
And the only other thing I got is the generator, uh, generator will be set Tuesday the nineteenth.
Okay. Do we have the propane tank?
Uh, yeah, I gotta go with the check. I can go pick it up tomorrow then. I was going to bury the plumbing to it, but I think we, we can get away with just laying it on the ground, on the butt ground. Get some of that PVC tape and wrap it, protect it against corrosion a little bit. But I don't see any need in burying it, you know, further than it is away from the tank. So it'll be about like a wall field type thing.
Yeah, we need to have that there and filled and ready to go for when they set it, so they can test it.
Well, he was supposed to tell me what size regulator, how many pounds regulator for that generator bit. He didn't tell me, he, I don't know if he just forgot to tell me or if he just doesn't know yet. He might not know until he gets the generator, but it doesn't matter. We can, the propane tank comes with, I think with a regulator rated for about five pounds, I think. It might be a little more or less than the generator. We'll find out Tuesday.
Okay.
And that's it for me.
All right, thank you, Stuart. Office manager, what do you have in your report?
Well, things are running pretty smoothly in the office. The, the O-MAG representative, W Vada, like Stuart said. And the way I understood this, we're automatically going to get a check for six hundred dollars because we've not filed any claims. Don't have to do anything on that. And we can get another six hundred dollars if the trustees will do some training and it's videos you can watch on their website and adopt a council handbook and take a little stability test to measure your improvement and review your insurance coverage. Get a note check for six hundred dollars.
What's the timeline on there? I was just thinking about, does it have to be when Rondo also?
Yeah, you all have to, and there's a handbook and they have a sample handbook on their website. We can make whatever changes we need to that and it's worth six hundred dollars. You can do whatever you want with the check.
Rebate on our insurance. I was going to say, that sounds good.
So twelve hundred dollars.
Good. Awesome. So you get the, get that information to us or?
How does that work?
Yeah, it's on the, it's on their website. I don't know, maybe do it at the same time.
And they have a copy council handbook on their?
On their website. I did not go ahead and print it out because it was close to fifty pages long. Tried to conserve a lot of that. If I need to print it out, I will, but I didn't.
Is that on the duplex setting or is that just one side?
It may be one side and that's still. You can write it on their website also.
Okay, I'll check it out. Look, I don't know if we, if O-MAG will make us have it on file.
I mean, when we, when, when you guys revise it for your home, they will need to be printed, they will need to be adopted and all that.
Okay.
So you'll just get that to us?
Hit it with a hamburger.
I guess what I was.
You're not on the board anymore. Can I call you back?
Look at it.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just, you know, the address, but web address.
Yeah.
And just do it.
Yeah. Just forward the information on and then we've done your part. Thank you.
The attorney, the Christmas relatives visiting, you'll watch this, go in and see.
This is very important, this six hundred dollars.
You gotta do my homework.
Sounds good.
What else do you have up your sleeve?
I think that's about it.
Okay, thank you very much. I will get that down.
I will also. When Rondo gets back, hopefully. He may, he may actually do it while he's over there if he has nothing else to do.
Yeah, he's with all his in-laws too.
Yeah.
All right, what is in the clerk treasurer's report?
Well, you and I went to the Department of Commerce C D B G workshop last Tuesday.
And it was very fruitful.
It was, gave us a lot of ideas of what we really need to do and otherwise known as we are, we're not a rural community. Because the definition of rural depends on who you ask. We are considered an urban rural county because Alva is in our county and has more than twenty-five hundred people in it.
Makes us urban. Wow.
Your ur- urban rural. Urban slash rural, yes, slash. And so therefore it, we found out it's very hard to get a lot of grant funding out here because of the way we're cannot consider rural. We're, uh, we're more frontier.
Yeah.
Shat, I've explained it.
We're on the frontier.
We're on the frontier island of Oklahoma. A lot of there's, an hour and a half of statistics from the census bureau telling us that we do not live in a low poverty area because we have a high graduation rate. And the median income for our area is over the low poverty level of thirty-eight, between thirty-eight and forty-two thousand dollars.
Nothing that really helped us.
No, and it's really hard for us to use those statistics, we found, in order to help us gain grant money. Because you have to use those statistics in order to.
Have figures.
Display your case. But once we broke out into some of the breakout sessions, um, I think it would be beneficial for us to invite Oida from Beaver. Carnegie, I believe is his last name. I can't remember his first name right now. Carnegie, I believe is his last name, I can't remember his first name right now, to come out and review our CIP that we had done well over, I think it was two thousand and twelve or before, maybe two thousand and ten, was when we did a CIP and laid out some needs. But I think we need to have that revisited because I think the lady that helped in the CIP to do the mapping that we got didn't get it quite right when it was done. So I think a review of that and to see what he thinks, where we can go. Because there are some things we can go after through the, CDVG is a Community Development Block Grant Program and there's several different areas within that program to go after money on. And I think getting his knowledge of what is needed would be while we're either having, having him come out or a phone call with him, with the board to see his take on freedoms situations.
I think that's a good idea.
Because there's community revitalization, there's, you know, your main street grants, your other things. But like you say, all that money is going to rural communities, which they consider Shawnee a rural community because it's rural of Oklahoma City. So.
The disconnect is that large?
Yes. So that's where we're at. So I think a revisit from Alida, a rep from Alida, it's for help. And there's also a, um, former commerce rep out of ENE that is supposed to be getting me his information so I can pass it out to the board members so that we can have maybe a conversation with a local rep who understands where freedoms at and what we face to get that.
A good example of the disconnect is, you know, the federal government had a huge program in the thirties to push electricity out to rural America. And then in the forties, it was landline telephones. Well, they haven't really done anything like that since. So their next big push is fiber speed internet, fiber home to home. Well, our argument out here is we can't even get our cellular phones to work. We don't know if we can get nine-one-one when we need it. That's what we need on the farm, not twenty million by dinner yet, so. Yeah, their, their definitions are a lot different than ours, for sure.
So we need them to come to your presentation, you think?
I think just, like you said, sit down, visit, or, you know, just kind of saying, this is what we, what we're wanting to do. But I think, or truthfully, I think they need, we invite them to come out and do a review of the CIP because he came on at the very end of when we did our CIP, he was just hired. Um, so he may kind of, I mean.
And you think his name was Carnegie? Did he take Kirk Fisher's place?
Yes. So. But yeah, I think a revisit of the CIP will help because a lot of the CDVG grants and stuff like that ask if you have a CIP and if you're at, what you're asking for, is it in the top five, is it in the top ten of your?
What's CIP mean?
Capital Improvement Plan.
Anything else?
That's all I've done right now.
Okay.
And I don't have, um, I forgot to have Don get me the sales tax deposit and stuff for this month. So I do not have the financials up to date. I will get those and also know to.
Oh, talking to Lynn.
Yeah, well, some of everybody, but I'm like making sure because I always get them a copy of them, so.
Shirley Reed's always saying that to me too.
Someone with last names, I don't know.
Yeah.
But I forgot to have her get, because it wouldn't have been till this week that they deposited the sales tax revenue anyway.
It's okay, it's only on video and in the paper.
I take full responsibility.
Item number four. If the board has had a chance to look over the past minutes from the November thirteenth meeting and the December eighth special meeting, I would like to get a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from December eighth and November thirteenth.
I'll second that motion.
Bracken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
You need me to say motion carries?
Please.
Motion carries.
Boy, he's official.
Yes, he is official.
That's enough, Lynn. Item number five. If the board is out of chance to look over the POs for the general fire, amendments, RB and grant funds, then I would like to get a motion approved.
I make a motion to approve the POs.
My second.
Cindy, did you already send that to us, the paper?
Did you forward the PO list to him? You don't have it.
Because Linda, our secretary, said, hey, we already got their purchase order list for the paper. And so maybe somebody did do it, we liked that, and I didn't want to leave here without it if we had.
I've given mine that I made them, so I can pray for it, but I think.
If you think you did.
The same time I gave it to them.
That says we losing it.
Tax scan will have a facility.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Bracken?
Appreciate you doing that.
Yes.
My God. Hopefully I did.
And you're supposed to say.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Stuart.
Line item number six. Discussion, action to approve or disapprove or take no action on the two thousand and eighteen REIT grant application. I believe if the board is out of chance to review the application, then I'd like to get a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the REIT grant application for two thousand and eighteen.
Affirmative, aye.
I'm the second first.
Yes. I second.
Thank you. I'm the second first and then you can ask.
Aye. Yay.
Yes. Bracken says yes, and it says yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Tough crowd tonight. Constructive criticism. Line seven, line item seven. Discussion and action on the resolution two thousand seventeen dash twelve to approve the two thousand and eighteen REIT grant for the town of Freedom.
As part of the application, it's the resolution saying that you guys know you're applying for twenty-year sirens and security cameras and that not one of you, but all of you would agree upon this.
Do we need to discuss that or are you ready to take action, Terry?
I'm ready to take action. Do we need a motion to approve then, is that what you're asking? Okay. So I make a motion that we approve the resolution to approve two thousand eight REIT grant.
A little redundant.
I was reading it, exactly.
Well, you're done. That wasn't true, were you?
Thank you, Stuart.
Thanks, Stuart.
Talk to you later.
Second, Mr. Bracken.
Second.
Bracken?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion carries. I feel like I'm on the tail end of the Roberts Rule of Board of Video of what not to do. Where did, where did Billy go wrong here? Line item number seven.
Okay, I know.
I mean, eight.
I guess.
Eight. Discussion, action, approve, disapprove or take no action on the scope of work slash benefits for the employees of the town of Freedom for two thousand and eighteen.
Did you guys ever choose to approve that?
Yes, we did.
So, okay, I says, you can make changes or whatever section is later. But I left it the same. I just changed and listed dates for the holidays so that we go along with the state and the county's holiday dates so that all governmental agencies are closed at the same time. Because I hadn't listed those out before.
The holiday?
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that.
May I make a motion to approve? The scope of work, or do I need to request a motion to approve?
Don't request one.
I make, I make a motion to approve the scope of work slash benefits for the employees of the town of Freedom.
Am I on the right one?
Yes, I am.
Looks like you fell in the trap she set for me.
We discussed this one a couple times and we, okay.
Yes, we've been over this one. And yes, I second. Motion carries.
Is there money being spent with this motion?
Um, possible holiday bonuses that go into the PO list for approval before.
Okay, so we'll see it in the PO list?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Because our holiday, um, bonuses come out of the RB fund, so it's not a taxpayer fund. And I transfer that over into our municipal trust where I do payroll, so taxes are taken out of it. So. But that's why it's listed as a holiday bonus, because it's not a taxpayer fund. We're not using their funds for holiday cheer.
Holiday cheer?
Okay, so. Bracken, what's your vote on the scope, sorry?
Pardon me?
Your vote on the scope, you said motion carries, but I didn't call for a vote yet.
You didn't?
No, I thought you did.
Uh, yeah, Terry.
You did.
Terry did.
No, I don't think so.
We'll just do it again, motion. Bracken?
Okay, can I get a motion?
No, you didn't motion.
We just need the vote.
We just need the vote.
Oh, our senators.
We got the motion and the second.
Right, now, then you said motion and carry, but I didn't ask you your vote. And may I now ask you your vote?
I thought you did.
No, I don't think we did on that one.
He just carried it right on through.
Are you sure?
Yes, could I have a yes or no, please?
I'll be reviewing this then. We need a stenographer, so we don't have.
That's what I'm trying to do. Isn't it, yeah? Yes.
All of it, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
I suppose that motion carries, that's probably what the clerk needs to say. One last thing I have to. Moving right along, Lynn, line item number nine. Discussion, action, approve, disapprove or take no action on making Bonnie Greer a full-time employee starting January first, two thousand and eighteen.
Um, I would like to make a motion that we make Bonnie a full-time employee starting January first, two thousand and eighteen.
I'll second that.
Bracken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Line item number ten. Discussion and action or action to approve, disapprove or take no action on annual compensation. Are you ready, Mrs. Smith, to discuss that?
Sure. You want to start or you want me to start?
You go right ahead.
Thank you. We had already discussed that at one of our meetings, um, executive session. And what we talked about was that we do want to, um, do a raise, raises. And Chad does have the amounts that we wanted to do.
I do, I thought you were getting started, okay. We'd like to bring Don to nine fifty an hour and bring Bonnie Greer to nine fifty an hour. And Stuart Page is a dollar increase. But I don't remember.
That's what, yeah. I don't remember that either.
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Lynn will find that out later, probably.
You just don't want to appear sneaky on it, because I mean, that one.
To appear what?
Sneaky.
Sneaky.
A dollar increase on his current hourly wage. But I can't remember off the top of my head.
I can't either, that's what I was trying to remember on that one.
I was appreciating the school board, ninety-nine, they said, we're going to a thousand dollars stipend so everybody knows what it is.
Only PO are listed out. It specifies.
Thank you.
Touchdown.
Yeah, no, that's why I, I put them up for it to see my specifications. The generic PO that's labeled.
Because it looks like to me you guys are doing a noble thing, so raises and.
I just made a motion for these. I make a motion to approve the annual compensation increases for the town of Freedom as discussed, is that qualified?
Yeah, yeah. Second.
Bracken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I keep saying that, so she will start saying it.
Uh, so I don't need those at store.
That's part of me and the clerk.
You can't go wrong with all the time.
Uh, line item number eleven. Discussion and action, approve, disapprove or take no action on resolution two oh one seven dash one three interlocal cooperative agreement for the Circuit Engineering District, C and B, number eight.
This is just a housekeeping item. We, ever since we do do business in our county with another governmental agency, they work also with Woods County, that we have an interlocal agreement to work with them with no strings attached. We would have the same type of agreement if we were working like with our REIT grant, if we were working with the county on something or like with another agency with something, we would have the same type of agreements, so.
Anybody ever voted to disapprove of their local agreement?
No.
County commissioners did it this month. It was CD eight. I remember the same thing. And it makes the auditor happy because it says you guys know you're going to do business probably with each other. It keeps them happy.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve, uh, the action on resolution two oh one seven dash one three interlocal cooperative agreement for Circuit Engineering District eight.
Yes.
No, I need a second.
Second.
You were just backwards.
I think he's.
Especially when I lay down the table and she tells me something that's wrong on purpose.
Yes.
Bracken?
Yes.
Smith? Yes.
Motion carries.
Does, I'm sorry, Lynn, I'm on number twelve. Does anyone have any? Does, I'm sorry, line item number 12, does anyone have any new business to discuss? Okay, line item 13, are there any remarks from the governing board, if any?
Do you?
I do not make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
At what time, sir? I don't have my watch or my phone.
Uh, 6:52.
You were great. How do you know? Duh, her name is not there.
Bracken?
How is she looking now?
Yes.
Smith? You didn't adjourn.
Gee.
It was one of our shorter ones, too. And it's like, you know?
It was.
It's what's got me off my game. It's usually a nine innings, so I give it...
Well, we're down to four quarters now. Roll the season.
Um...
Well, at least it's a little slower to go move your life, because she, she probably will pick on you the way she's saying that.
Yeah, well, I don't know about that. She would be glad that it wasn't a nine-hour meeting. Great call order of the meeting of the MTA.
Uh, what time?
6:53.
Bonnie, would you like to be the official timekeeper?
Sure.
She was cheating here.
She was cheating.
I'm just trying to figure it out. I just stuck something under this table, too. Oh, it's tape. I thought it was gum. I got a paper a while ago, I couldn't see it, but I can feel it.
Call to order.
Bracken?
Present.
Smith?
Present.
Can I get a motion for a quorum?
I make a motion that we do have a quorum.
Second, not motion.
Bracken?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Line item number three, discussion, action on past minutes for November 13th meeting of the MTA. If everyone has had a chance to look at those past meeting minutes, I would like to get a motion to approve.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from November 13th.
Second, not motion.
Bracken?
Yes.
Smith? Yes.
Motion carries.
Line item number four, discussion, discussion and action on purchase orders for the MTA fund. If everybody has had a chance to review those POs for the MTA, then I would like to take action to approve those POs.
I make a motion to approve those, the POs.
I second that motion.
Bracken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Are there any remarks from the governing board?
No. Not from me, what about you?
Nothing that I can think of relative to the MTA. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn at 6:56.